All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. The October 17th, 2023 Pecosin City School Board meeting is called to order. Patrick?
Would you all please raise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Now for a moment of silence. Thank you. And now for a quote. Do the best you can until you know better, then when you do know better, do better. And that is by Maya Angelou. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Firth, are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Purdy, we have recognition.
Our October Senior of the Month is a young lady pursuing a career field in animal science and zoology. To that end, this student has committed to volunteering much of her time to organizations such as the Virginia Zoo and Bluebird Gap Farm. There she has learned how to present to others the importance of conservation and being good stewards of our environment. Her teachers and peers describe her as a leader, an active listener, dependable, motivated, and responsible. Beyond taking some of Pecosin High's most rigorous courses, she has served in a leadership role at her place of employment while attaining the honor of being an A Honorable Student since September 2020 and maintaining perfect attendance throughout high school. Please join me in congratulating our October Senior of the Month, Carson Akamp. Akamp.
That concludes our recognitions for the evening. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the superintendent's update.
This is going to be the shortest update I've ever made in my life, but also very impactful. So I'm thrilled to announce tonight that we are the proud recipients of a half million dollar grant from DODIA to help launch the next phase of our literacy program. This will afford us coaches for the next five years, and then we plan to continue to reapply. We're going to apply for a similar grant next year to roll this out in secondary schools. This will be focusing primarily in grades K through five. I'd like to also take this opportunity to publicly thank the division instructional team that guided this process. And whenever you're applying for a federal grant, the work is enormous. There's just a lot of steps. And this team worked feverishly to get this done. I want to thank them publicly, Kim Montalvo, Kelly Purdy, and Amber Brown. So let's give them a round of applause for all their hard work.
Thank you. Congratulations. Instruction update, Ms. Brown?
Mine'll take a little longer. All right. Good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Burbage, school board members, and our Pecosin community. Tonight we have a couple of instructional updates that I'd like to share with you all. The first, as you all received your packet, every year from two years ago, we began our strategic plan. And the strategic plan focused on the needs of our division, and it gave us our superintendent vision and our whole community vision of where we want to go over the next five years. So bringing in all of our stakeholders getting information, we focused on our five areas. And five areas covering teaching, learning, and instruction, student social and emotional well-being, parent and community engagement and satisfaction, division, school, and staff effectiveness and engagement, and finances, facilities, and operations. What you have with you is our monitoring document. As we lay out our strategic plan and we have our goals, and you can find those on our Pecosin City Public Schools webpage right on the front. And you click there and you can see all of our goals and our action steps. You'll notice that we have it lined out where we have our baseline data in one column and then our progress data. Every year what we will do is align that progress data to go forth. I didn't put the entire 40-page document up here tonight because I wanted to spare our community members. However, you do have that with you. But just to go over a little bit of what you will see when you look. Our objective one for teaching, learning, and instruction, just as an example, is to assess, enhance, and expand meaningful programs with curriculum that consist of real-world applications for all students. Some of the areas that we wanted to focus on according to our strategic plan were to develop a working definition of meaningful curriculum and real-world applications, which we have when we grabbed our administrators and our teachers together, came up with our working definition there. Each of these links will be emailed to you so that you are also able to click in there and see these documents and all of the different data that supports it. We also have to continue to implement close alignment of curriculum and continue to emphasize rigorous instruction. One of those key areas we've looked at is creating a literacy leadership team. Our leadership team began last year as we convened. They are overseeing and they are an integral part of our curriculum for our K-5 literacy program. As you all are aware, with VLA, we are really looking for K through eight. One of those steps is to adopt that curriculum. Right now, VDOE has released K through three literacy curriculum. We are expecting that they will have a full release of K through eight, probably around November 16th, 15th. That's the next time that the Virginia Board will meet, and they're scheduled to approve that curriculum at that time. Once that curriculum is approved, of course, we will come together as a team, look at the different curriculums and resources, bring in our teachers so that they can serve and look at it, and follow that VDOE textbook adoption process, and then present it to our school board as well. So we'll be looking to see that our community comes, checks out our resources and our documents when we put it out there at the schools so that we can get that feedback too. Other things you will notice in there, as you go through our student social and emotional well-being, we're going to spend a little bit of time on that tonight, just going through a few things. Our parent and community engagement, that's one thing we're really reaching out for. One of those things is to send out surveys. We've started with one survey of our parents, but now we're going to look at how are other programs progressing? We've started with our audits. One of our audits that we have done are stipend audits. We've done audits of our gifted program. We're looking to do audits of our other programs that we have in-house when it relates to instruction, which would include CTE programming, it would include our special education program. Because our goal is to continue to enhance these programs and make sure that they're supporting our students where they are and providing those resources needed. And our stakeholders are a key factor in doing that, so we can get that feedback too. One of the other areas tonight that I'd like to focus a little bit of time on and share with you is our social-emotional learning. As you recall, last year we brought to you the curriculum, Carrying School Communities, and we did ripple effects as well. In 2020, the General Assembly met, and they stated that we were going to have a social-emotional learning component. So the Virginia Department of Education was tasked with creating some guidelines for schools to use. Within those guidelines, schools have different curriculum options and standards to pull from in order to help us guide it in our way of instructing our students. So social-emotional learning, as defined by the Virginia Department of Education, is the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. So that's kind of what we base all of our programs on. As I stated earlier, House Bill 753 is the one that came out. In 2020, General Assembly required VDOE to do three things. One was to establish that uniform definition of social-emotional learning, which I just read to you. It also asked that they have standards that would go through K through 12 in the Commonwealth. Standards had to be made available to each local school division no later than July 1st, 2021. And then finally, a report was made by November 1, 21, on the resources needed to successfully support schools in implementing this curriculum and implementing the program. And then that is when the Pecosin City Public Schools came to you all, presented you with that curriculum, and that is the reason for adopting and going behind it. So I want to go over the overarching themes. When we look at the core competencies and the overarching themes of social-emotional learning and well-being, remember, this is one of our strategic goals. We look at the five different areas, and those five areas are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and decision-making. If you think of it as a cycle, we start with our self-awareness, helping students understand themselves so that they can progress along the cycle to self-management, managing our emotions, to social awareness, understanding the emotions of others, how to respond and how to react, going through relationship skills, what are healthy relationships, and that's peer-to-peer, and then decision-making, of course, making those great decisions based upon that cycle. With your overarching themes, some of these things that we look at, if you notice, at the end in parentheses, I have creative thinking, creative thinking, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and citizenship. If you recall, Virginia laid out our profile of a graduate. The goal from K through 12 is to make sure we have a process that gets our students ready to be that profile of a graduate. Each of these core concepts or overarching concepts are linked up to one of those skills, and of course, that is also provided by VDOE. Although there is no SOL test for these standards, we don't really think of them as our typical standards, right? In our different content areas, they should be thought of as different skills that we embed within our program. And I'll show you how we do that. Social-emotional learning for us is nothing new. This is something we have done for years and years in Pecosin prior to COVID, the pandemic. And here's how it starts. I'm sure you may recall your own students coming home and talking about, you know, group circles, having circle time, circle time on the carpet, or having morning meetings where the class comes together. This is a procedure that has been in place that we have with students to ask them, how is your day? What is something that has occurred for you? Are you struggling with something? Is there something going on? It's the way for students to talk and really center themselves before they start the day's lesson and to build those relationships with that trusted, caring adult, and to understand other students and develop empathy. We then went from our circles and morning meetings during COVID. We started to have our morning meetings kind of divided up. And when those SEL standards came out and our counseling SOLs, we had our teachers work together to embed them. One of the ways we do that is, as you look, here's a snapshot from our primary school when we had it there. So week four of school, the unit was all about feelings, and it's identifying your feelings. It's tied up to a standard, and students were given a strategy sheet, which I'll show you in a moment. Again, these are things we've done for years, but the goal is not to teach social-emotional learning in a silo, but really to connect it to our learning. So for example, if we have textbooks or books within our classroom library that are discussing feelings, like Sophia's very, very angry, or some of the other books that we have, we tie them in and use them as a learning piece, not only to strengthen our literacy program, but also bring in those real skills. Other units that you see, self-awareness, how are you feeling? The next week, we talk about self-regulation and so on. Here's a sample strategy sheet. If you noticed, there was a strategy sheet that was linked up there. The strategy sheet gives a discussion question to ask, how many different emotions can you name? How many can you draw? Can you feel more than one emotion at one time? So it's these opening questions that start the circle talk to make sure everybody's ready and prepped to learn. And then as a whole class, we go through their anchor words and wall charts, mirroring my feelings with a movement break. There are videos that are played in there, making faces out of Play-Doh. Again, these are simple things that can be done in the classroom to bring everybody on the same page and really weave in those skills. And that's when Sophie gets angry, really, really angry. For our K-5 edition, the curriculum that we have focused on is our Carrying School Community. And this is the one that was brought before the board prior. What I've also linked up in here is the kindergarten snapshot. So when we look at the kindergarten snapshot, I know that might be difficult for you all to read, so I'm going to go ahead and read some of these social skills that are out there. Some of the ones that are brought forth are moving responsibly, managing emotions, expressing emotions, recognizing emotions. Again, these are the keys within the caring communities to teach our students how to understand their big feelings. As you recall, post-COVID, we saw different types of behaviors coming in where students were quarantined and at home, and now they are socializing with their peers again. So really understanding what they're feeling and how to appropriately and respectfully express themselves. And again, a first grade snapshot, and some of these are reporting what a partner has said, taking turns, learning think per share, different skills at raising your hand to speak, responding in a respectful manner. So just different skills that are embedded. So that concludes my program for you tonight, but I stand ready for any questions or comments you all may have.
I have some questions. And so we saw the K through five, but looking at some of the Virginia standards that have on here, like 9-10A says, I can recognize that all people, including myself, have certain advantages and disadvantages in society based on who they are and where they were born. I mean, us teaching that, that's kind of getting into some areas. I can recognize that my conscious and unconscious bias affects my interactions with others. I mean, who's going to be guiding some of these that go with it? I can recognize and describe and distinguish inequality and injustice at different levels of society.
Sure, so those are great, those are great ones to bring about. What I would tell you is, in our history curriculum, a lot of those skills are interwoven within it. So as I told you, this isn't something that we teach in a silo, but it's woven throughout. So when our students are studying our U.S. history, for example, or they're studying the early Americas, these are typical segments that will come into play about how our civilizations were created. So it's a natural progression of discussing those because we already do it within our curriculum. But that is a high school level. So keep in mind that what you're, these are more elementary, but those standards that are in there, we would not expect our younger kiddos to be prepared for.
When are they going? Are we going to start doing high school? Y'all plan on bringing this into the high school too? When does this go live to everybody? And what kind of guidance are y'all giving to teachers? And what kind of expectations are you giving to parents that you're going to be putting this, this school with their kids?
Sure. So what I will tell you is, it's been live since 2020, 2021. So that's when the General Assembly met in 2020. As far as those themes, those themes are already included within the curriculum from VDOE. So when you look at it now from the standard of your SEL curriculum or your SEL kind of standards that are in there, they align currently with what is taught in the history classes just by content.
So we don't have to go by the VDOE guidelines if it's up to us to vote on what we want to do? I know we voted before, but we could always look back if we have to.
Yeah, I can answer that for you, Mr. Childress. These guidelines are just that, they're guidelines, they're not a standard curriculum. Our teachers have been using the standard course of study for years, that every few years they update it, VDOE does. And these are skills that are woven into the curriculum and have been for many, many years. What we brought to you all the year before last, I believe, was a resource package. We often do that now when a curriculum is out there. We help our teachers with a package of resources that keeps them from having to reinvent the wheel constantly as they build strategic lessons. They then can go to this database with some really great activities and already vetted and connected to the curriculum resources. And that's all this is. We chose two different ones out of hundreds of options. We put a team together over the division, a secondary team. They chose a curriculum called Ripple Effect. And then the elementary one is Carrying Schools, Carrying Community.
Carrying School Community.
School Community.
And parents were on that.
And yeah, we had parent representation. It was a vetted process we went through. And every school division in the state went through this same process, and most in the country. If you had been living under a rock after COVID, to not be seeing a constant reminder that kids were missing some things from their time quarantined and getting back acclimated to being social creatures again in society. So this is one of the things that the Department of Education, following the order from the General Assembly, sent out as guidelines. So it's just simple guidelines. Our curriculum is a resource package for our teachers.
And I would just like to also add that right now, the rollout for this has been K through five. So K through five is what we have focused on with that Carrying School.
Yes, I mean, I read 7A. I mean, I'm just looking at this now for the first time, and I probably should look more. But I can recognize and describe unfairness and injustice in many forms, including attitude, speech, behaviors, policies, practices, and laws. Like what laws are we going to explain to the kids that are unfair and unjust? And it's just these guidelines, yes, the guidelines, but there are some strict things that are written on here that I'm just happening to be looking through that. You know, do test that barrier of whose job is to teach that? And I just want to make sure that we are looking at that.
It's the teacher's job to teach it.
It's also the parent's job to teach it. I mean, you can go straight to teachers, but it's parents' job and it's parents' ability to know what's being taught and what's going on to their kids. And I just want to make sure that we are keeping a good eye on what's going out and what's going there.
So I have a question. When the curriculum was created, when the committee got together, were there topics or points in the curriculum that were pulled out because they were controversial? Or was the curriculum adopted as-is by that committee?
Again, this is just a resource package. So teachers will pick out pieces from the curriculum like they have done for years and do in all of our curriculum areas. If we were talking about math, there's curriculum resources that math teachers use to pull those resources to teach math and reinforce those topics. This is nothing different from that. So yes, there was a team that looked at packages to decide which package made the most sense for Pecosin. And the packages that were chosen by the teams, the secondary team and the elementary team, were ones that I think represent the community of Pecosin. There's nothing radical in any of those packages. And it's very teacher-friendly. So teachers have these pools of resources to use so they don't have to reinvent all of this to meet the standards of, we're teaching kids also how to be social creatures in addition to math and science and social studies. And again, not a separate class. The key to this presentation is to clarify that this is not a class or a program. It's simply a body of resources for our teachers to use to help meet these standards within the normal curriculum. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I'm going to reserve my comments until I do have a chance to go into the.
And it's available, it's available to all of you to study. You'll, this curriculum is expansive. There's a lot of opportunities for teachers in this resource package. I would encourage you to look at it in detail. It's got a lot of information in it.
And I think curriculum for math, it's cut dry, but some of these curriculums can really have a teacher's bias or someone's bias that could be included very easily in this. And that's the only thing, I want to make sure that we are watching it just to make sure that we are teaching, not teaching anybody else's beliefs or anything else that could be on it. And that could happen very easily if a teacher can pull off either way they want to go. Schools should be teaching.
Our goal is always to partner with parents and really support our community. We are one team, we are one community, and if there is a way that we can work with parents, I mean, it's an extension. So I respect what you say, absolutely, but we also want to do what's in the best interest of all of our kiddos. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Operations update, Dr. Ratliff? Did I skip you, Ms. Spence? No, I didn't. I'm going out of order. I mean, in order, but out of.
I can go back.
This is how it is on the agenda, sir. I know it's usually not that way, but I'm going wild on the agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Martin, Mr. Tillot, and board members. We'll shift gears a little bit tonight, and we're going to talk a little bit about volunteers. We're getting back to the point now, after the pandemic, that we are, we're starting to see a lot more volunteers coming into schools, which, you know, was never an odd occurrence in Pecosin. And thankfully now, when you do go into the schools, pretty much all of the schools that you go in, you see people there pretty frequently. So essentially, one thing, again, what, as I said, we're seeing a real increase in volunteers all the way around. As our programs grow, as we continue to build more in, as more parents want to volunteer, as more community members want to volunteer. The other thing that has been a hot issue is the, over the last few years, is safety. We have to make sure that we're on the right end of safety. And it's a fine balance because we want to keep as many people coming into the schools as we can to help out and to help the teachers and work with the kids. Several years ago, we had developed a volunteer handbook. And prior to the pandemic, that is kind of the process that we went through in vetting volunteers. So what we've done is we've gone back to the table, and I guess our volunteer handbook has evolved somewhat to fit more of what we experience now and what we deal with now. But we really have two levels of volunteers that we're looking at in working with. The first level would be those volunteers that would be working more directly under the supervision of a teacher or another adult in the classroom or, for lack of better words, kind of the one-offs or someone like that. The other level would be those volunteer coaches, tutors, the wording that we use as a school champions group, those that are in there frequently. Those two different groups of volunteers will go through two different types of vetting. The volunteers that are in the category of the coaches and the daily tutors and the ones that are a little bit more involved and maybe more hands-on and not under the direct supervision of teachers, they have to go through the same vetting process as anyone that we would hire, the background checks and everything else. The other volunteers, the one-offs or the ones that are working under the supervision of our teachers, the readers that you may see at the primary school. If you've had kids that go through the school here at the primary school, I think everybody knows what the readers are, who the readers are. Essentially, what we'll do there, each school will have a volunteer coordinator. And a part of the responsibility is the person that is volunteering in the school will cross-check them against a sex offender registry, will ask for a reference, will ask them to complete an online training on FERPA. And all of that, again, is managed by the school volunteer coordinator. Now, that sounds like it's a fairly arduous process, but we really have it broken down to where it's only about a 15-minute process. So essentially, those people that are kind of coming in daily and helping us out and are under the direct supervision of our people, within about 15 minutes, we can have them onboarded and have all the materials and make sure that we're keeping everyone safe as they need to be. By the end of the month, we do plan on communicating this out to the stakeholders, to the parents, to the community members, so everyone does understand and know, if you want to volunteer with the school, here's what you, what we need you to do, and please do come and volunteer because at this point, again, we're at the point in time where we can welcome any and all that want to come and help. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Yes?
How many volunteers do we typically, I mean, outside of the school champions, but like, you know, I went to the primary school and read for my son in his primary school class. Are we having good participation? Is it growing? Is it something that we encourage more in the future?
I think we can always encourage it because I think the more people you can get in to help, the better it's going to be. But I can tell you daily, when you go into the buildings, you incrementally see more people in, especially from coming back from the pandemic, I guess, is what I'm looking at. And I think that I would say what we would see now would rival what we were seeing around the pre-pandemic time. And, you know, that's why we started looking at and talking about, okay, what exactly do we need to do with volunteers? How do we need to vet them? You know, what process do we need to follow? So I would say we're about at the level that we were prior to the pandemic.
Is there a list of like, there are types of volunteers that we're looking for and reading, or languages?
I would say per school that they can tell you. And that's one of the things, when Ms. Purdy puts the information out, she probably will put out a list of things that we need, things that people can do, you know, anything like that. But all of that information will be coming out by the end of the month. But I don't know that you're going to see a comprehensive division-wide list. I think it's going to be a lot more individualized by each school. But she'll give examples when she, when she does send the information out, so people will know, you know, with this, I've got an area of expertise here, I may be able to come and help out. Or even the readers in themselves are very helpful to have.
Thank you. All right, we'll have our finance update with Ms. Spence.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the school board. For the finance report this evening, I have a number of items to review with you. The first item is going to be the Impact Aid. Since in October, that's when we typically start beginning to collect the data. As you know, Impact Aid is a U.S. Department of Education program that provides financial assistance to local school divisions. The Pecosin City Public School receives basic support payments for federally connected children, which are those students whose parents or legal guardians are active-duty military or work on federal property. The Impact Aid funding program is distributed based on the percentage of a school division's federally connected population. Based on last year's survey, the Pecosin City Public Schools had 501 federally connected students, which was about 25% of the total student enrollment. Active-duty military accounts for about 60% of the students. We are required to compile this information and report annually around January to support funding for the following fiscal year. Therefore, in order to determine the eligibility for these students enrolled in our school, an annual Impact Aid survey form must be completed. Now, this year, the survey form is going to be completed using ParentSquare, which is a, you know, it's been great since it's been rolled out. The survey will be based on employment as of tomorrow, October 18th. The notification will be opened up. I believe everyone, the parents will receive a notification around 1:00 tomorrow. Impact Aid does require that a separate form be completed for each student, which is going to be easy to click between the students and the ParentSquare. Now, this form needs to be completed as soon as possible, but no later than November 3rd. So we really do appreciate that everyone takes the time because it is a substantial amount of monies that are received. Last year, we received approximately $238,000, so it was pretty significant. So we appreciate everyone's time, all parents' time who take, you know, to complete these forms. Now, the next item that I'd like to review is the Student Activity Fund Audit. These funds were audited by Brown Edwards &amp; Company, and of course, those are the funds that are held at the school level. The auditors reviewed the year-end financial statements and performed test work to confirm that the financial statements presented fairly in all material respects, the cash receipts, disbursements, and ending balances. And you have the report there along with the report from the auditor that said there's no deficiencies or material weaknesses were identified. And I'd like to take time now. We have bookkeepers, they did awesome time for those that are here. Jessica Thomas, she's here. There, she's at the primary school. Beverly Naylor at the high school. Ryan, he's at the middle school. And Shelley, yep, they did a great job. It's not only this little bit of time that they're there during, the auditors are there during the audit. It is year-round, day in and day out. It is a big job to keep this thing going and keep the receipts going and everything and all the other, all the other things they have to do and to keep these cash receipts and disbursements and keep it going. Appreciate all their hard work and also, of course, the principals and so forth, too. It's a great job. So we just take a moment to congratulate them. So next, fun time, fiscal year 25 budget. Here we go. Here's the calendar. We got it going. Just about two weeks ago, I think, sent out the budget planning tool. We're supposed to, I've actually got one back already from one of the departments. So November 6th, we're going to have the budget submissions due from the principals and directors. One item to note, also, bat tracking. Our budget, our bookkeepers do an awesome job keeping everyone online with their materials and supplies. Someone mentioned that as well. December 20th is the anticipated release of the governor's budget. Now, we're in a new biennium now, so he's going to be coming out with his new budget. January 10th, the 24th, the General Assembly will be convening. Of course, they've got all new, all their new people onboard. January 16th, 2024, superintendent will present the budget update to the school board work session. February 20th, the 24th, Ms. Tillot will present the proposed budget at the school board work session. And in March 19th, that'll be the public hearing. So that's what we have so far. And April 22nd, that's the scheduled joint meeting with the council. Now, of course, anytime, as it's been in the past, anytime any new work sessions need to be announced, they can, definitely can do that. So far, that's the budget process and the budget calendar. For input, for the fiscal year 2025 budget, of course, Mr. Tillot seeks input from faculty and staff, and there's a public hearing. We also have Let's Talk. And Mr. Tillot is always available, as well as the principals, myself, my finance team. Please give us a call. We should. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. So has the input email, the budget input email, has that already gone out to all the teachers and administrators?
Absolutely. That's the stage we're in right now. Our teams are meeting in the schools to really create their needs list, and that's where the whole budget process starts, and then we'll take it from there.
I did want to also note that on the budget planning tool, everything's being tied to the strategic plan as well, so that we're having everything tied up. Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Spence.
Thanks, ma'am.
Ms. Firth, your public comment?
Yes, ma'am, I have four. First, I have Theodore Bossiani of 19, Dryden Drive.
Before we get started, I just have to read the public comment statement. "The Pecosin School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings. School board members do not respond to public comment during a meeting. All comments should address a matter related to Pecosin Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comment that involves an individual student-related matter, the disclosure of which would violate applicable confidentiality requirements. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students. One can respectfully disagree with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers are encouraged not to engage in personal attacks. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. To follow school board policy, time allotted, two speakers shall be three minutes." Thank you.
Members of the board, I would like to speak to you about disciplinary action in our school system. Very briefly, there are offenses and consequences, then there's appeals process. First, I would inform you that there's, at least in my situation, no form of discretion or sentence for punishment. A first-time offender is treated as a multi-residivist. This is wrong in many ways, I'll go down a rabbit hole you don't want me to go. A first-time offender for, let's say, an alleged fight should have the totality of evidence represented and have both parties heard so a defense for said actions could be heard. This apparently isn't being done. Now, there's any discretion being applied to any first-time offender, so one who has followed all the rules and been a model student for years has to suffer the same consequences as a recidivist, just like in a draconian society where there's no discretion. You have a range of consequences listed in the Code of Student Conduct, as well as offenses with minimum and maximum levels of consequences. If you're not going to adhere to those ranges of punishment, why even publish them by anyone? Two good students were suspended in accordance with PCBS Code of Student Conduct in accordance with an alleged violation, where it could have been multiple levels of punishment, and yet a first-time offender was hit with a punishment that did not fit the offense. Amazingly, they were soon after joking with each other for what they had done. They were boys being boys, laughing together the next day. Then there's the appeals process. What do you think a reasonable time to hear an appeal should be? Keep it to yourself. Because mine was in excess of 13 days after my first appeal to the high school principal with no consideration for the totality of the suspension and what it entailed. This three-day suspension, let's say, was in excess of five days because it carried over unjustly into the weekend. This then leads us to Virginia law title 22.1-274.04, Short-Term Suspension Procedure and Readmission. Out of the five paragraphs in this Virginia educational law section, three were violated by the administration. Lastly, let's discuss supervision or the fact of no supervision of this program where the incident occurred. If there was, this whole incident would have not occurred, it would have played out the way it did. So what say you about a cannibalism? How am I likely to never hear because it'll be covered up just because it was to be made an example of a good student for it occurs that the intent was to hurt a good student? I'm not going to speak of what I and my family have done for the school district, but you know my name, and that's no coincidence. You all have had a friend in this community that would have done anything for you, but not even to sit down at a conference or phone call when this had occurred. So thanks for standing in the back.
Next, I have Brandon Call of 13, Bayview Drive.
Broken by war and repelled by the fates after many seasons slip by, the leaders constructed a beautiful horse as big as a mountain, cutting pines to weave its ribs. They feigned a vote of offering that they would return home, and this rumor was spread around. They chose by lot men to furtively enclose in the dark flank, and they filled the vast hollow belly with armed soldiers. Virgil the Anan, Book Two, lines 13 through 30, circa 27 B.C., something like that. This is the story of the Trojan Horse, and we all know it. It has served as a warning to us for 2,000 years, and I come tonight with a warning about SEL. Social-emotional learning appears innocuous at first glance, and to be honest, when my wife brought it up to me, I wasn't sure why she was so upset about it. From the SEL website, quote, "SEL helps us listen to one another, bridge differences across cultures, and take meaningful steps to improve our communities. I see no cause for alarm. In fact, it's beautiful. While most of it is obviously not controversial, what is contained in an SEL lesson varies substantially. Is it not at all the same as teaching our children to be nice to each other and cultivate morality? SEL was developed by an organization called CASL, using the social and emotional learning and equity guidelines to build psychometric and mental health profiles on your K through 12 children. These amateur psychological evaluations are then stored in a database. Data is collected without obtaining parental consent. One of the concerns is that the SEL programs is that the collected data may be potentially misused on a captive and vulnerable audience for indoctrination, social and emotional engineering, or to influence compliance. More worrisome, the framework states in the CASL resource titled Equity and the Social-Emotional Learning: A Cultural Analysis. It argues that making explicit issues such as power, privilege, prejudice, discrimination, and social justice in the field of SEL. On their website, in the transformative model, self-awareness encompasses a student's understanding of their identity. Their identity is to be understood in terms of intersectionality, a concept coined by Kimberle Crenshaw, the woman who coined the term, critical race theory itself being an offshoot of critical theory. On the SEL website, it further states, "We're committed to addressing racial injustice and helping you, the teacher, drive real change in your school communities. These resources will help you..." These resources will help you implement social-emotional learning in a way that builds on students' cultural assets, critically examines systems of power, and develops better ways for teaching, learning, and being." Not surprisingly, critically examining systems of power is vintage critical race theory. It is, in fact, the entire foundation of the theory, and it gets worse. The SEL competency of self-management-
Mr. Call, you have reached your three-minute limit.
May I get an extra minute if I'm really nice and tell a funny joke?
I'll make a motion that he get the extra minute.
Do I have to tell a funny joke?
I'll second it.
Thank you. That self-management be defined in terms of-
Sir, I'm sorry, we have to vote on that.
Oh.
So, sorry.
I'll do a dance, too.
So we'll take, we call for the vote.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin? Motion passes, vote is seven-zero.
Thank you. Going quickly here, self-management defined as anti-racism, more prominently and publicly defined by Ibram X. Kennedy, author of How to Be an Anti-Racist, who declares that the only remedy for past discrimination is present discrimination. In SEL's webinar, SEL is a leverage for equity and social justice. Castle's president and CEO advocates that SEL should be used to favor certain students over others primarily because of their race. She goes on further to say that they should adopt anti-racist practices, that they should do implicit bias trainings, and make educators aware of their white privilege. So I started from a position where I thought this was good and harmless and beautiful, and after reading the words of the people who developed it and looking at their motives and implementation methods, it's obvious that this is nothing but a way to sneak the most vile and repugnantly racist socialist and Marxist theories to young children. That's not my opinion, that's what they say. More worrisome, the handouts you give us delegitimize parents by calling us home partners, and we're not allowed to get copies of what they're being taught. We're told that it is a copyright violation to reprint it.
Mr. Call, you've reached your one-minute limit.
Nuts. All right, guys.
Next, I have Sheri Dykstra of 20 Amies Road.
Hello to the board, Mr. Tillot. My name is Sheri Dykstra, and I wanted to touch base on things, comments that I had made at the city council meeting on September the 25th. I'm sure you're all aware of the TAG program. I felt like there was some conflict of interest going on. There was a spouse involved, but I do need to make a comment on what's going on here with SEL. My husband and I just made the comment, like, oh, that's Parenting 101. But it's not the resource that I'm really worried about, it's how it's going to be implemented in the classroom. I do have an example. My daughter just graduated in June, off to college, and she experienced something the day after the governor's election, and if you guys would like to hear that story, I'd be happy to tell you after. I'm trying, let me try to fit this all in. It's disappointing to see that a school board member's wife or any parent would risk having our school division lose their accreditation just because they're not getting their way. There was some, a threat, threatening, not threatening, but threatening to opt out the TAG kids from the SOL. I do hope that the school board members that were involved might make a statement, either accepting responsibility, maybe an explanation. It would just be nice to hear from you tonight. As a result of this situation, I do request that every work session be televised and recorded for parents to watch at their convenience. Any discussions regarding personnel could take place after the cameras turned off. I understand we still have specialists teaching TAG. Our district is so small, we don't have the volume of educators like others in the surrounding school divisions for TAG to get their own program, as well as our reading and math specialists. It's simply not fair. I have heard from so many teachers and parents who agree with my comments, but they wish to stay in the shadows. Our teachers do not feel heard. Why is there a disconnect between the school and our educators? It is, is it possible for our board members to visit our schools, maybe meet with the leads of each grade, have lunch with special education department? Our sped department is broken, and it's been broken. Is there some type of anonymous survey that you can send out for these teachers? Please make an effort to reach out to these teachers and ask them for ideas and suggestions because they matter. I love my hometown, as you can tell. I love my traditions. I love how competitive we all are in everything we do here, but right now, we all should be focusing on the countless number of children who are nowhere near their reading grade level and make sure we do everything in our power to help them close the reading gap before it's too late. One huge step is for those kids to get the specialists back on their side of the court. I'm not against TAG, by the way. I just, you gotta, you gotta look out for special education. Parents at home, please look into our governor's all-in tutoring because your child may qualify and be required by law to receive additional tutoring through services-
Ms. Dykstra, you've reached your three-minute limit. Next, I have Tim Dykstra of 20 Amies Road.
School board members, Mr. Tillot, my name's Tim Dykstra, and I want to provide some background on why my wife and I are so passionate about making sure that kids that need help are getting the help. Up until June of last year, two of our three kids in the Pecosin school system either had an IEP or a 504. Our child with an IEP has cognitive dyslexia. That means they're dyslexic, but it also means that their cognitive aspect of processing from short-term to long-term memory is not working as well as it should. That means that reading was a huge challenge for my child. For the child with the IEP, we're proud to say that that IEP has now been changed to a 504 after many years of work. We would never have been able to make that transition from the IEP to a 504 through, without a collaborative effort between all the great specialists that have helped in primary, elementary, middle schools, as well as we also paid for an outside professional three times a week for one hour a session for that entire time. We did this because our goal as parents was to close the reading gap as fast as we could so that our child could be a normal child and not get pulled out of class multiple times a day. I understand not all parents in Pecosin have the means to pay an outside professional for help. I can honestly say that the confidence level of our child has exploded since getting off of his IEP. All parents want their kids to do well in school because they know a solid educational foundation is key to their future successes. All kids want to do well in school, just like all adults want to do good at their job. The benefits that accompany a child doing well in school are immeasurable. Children who do better in elementary, middle, and high school are more likely to pursue higher-level degrees. Higher-level degrees open more doors and opportunities for people to be more positive contributors to society. The oath each of you took when you accepted your school board positions clearly says, "All students." My suggestion to all of you is to make sure that everything you work on and are working on is inclusive of all students. Thank you.
Next, I have Benjamin Aronson of 7 Harborview Drive.
Evening, PCPS, school board, and parents in the audience or watching online, as well as my wife Shannon, who might be watching from home while taking care of our children so that I can be here. Thanks, love. Appreciate it. My name is Benjamin Aronson. I currently reside at 7 Harborview Drive, my beloved wife, and eight children, eight young children. We currently have five of our children enrolled in Pecosin Middle, Elementary, and Primary Schools. Humbly, I am active-duty military and have been stationed in Portsmouth since the summer of last year. For our children's well-being without traffic, I was grateful to drive approximately 45 minutes to and from work across the 664 Bridge, which is pretty unpredictable. My wife and I chose Pecosin specifically for the smaller school system for what we thought would have been more traditional in values. Our thinking was that our children would gain a traditional education without any new experimental programs. Unfortunately, we could not have been more wrong. This year, right now, Pecosin Primary and Elementary are teaching our precious children an experimental social-emotional learning pilot program named Care in School Community. They have been and continue to do this without properly informing parents. The school board has already voted and approved its implementation with plans for a complete rollout next year, which is designed to be infused into every bit of the traditional curriculum and without the consent of parents and without an option to opt out in the primary, elementary, and likely middle school. This unfortunate discovery has forced my wife and I to keep our two daughters home from Pecosin Elementary School, as PCPS will not, will not opt our children out of their optional experimental SEL program and will instead force teach their experimental SEL to our children against our will. I implore you as parents to look into the pros and cons and the background of such child educational experimentation yourselves. I humbly ask you all on the PCPS school board to do the right thing, be forthcoming, and make an opt-out option for your social-emotional learning experiment for the sake of our unsuspecting family. Thank you all for your valuable time and attention to this matter. God bless each and every one of you.
Last, I have Tricia of 114 White House Drive.
Hi. Good evening. I've come a little prepared, got to speak tonight. I haven't written anything, but being here tonight and hearing some things, I do believe that there has been feeling in our community, some things are going on that should be made public, things behind what is going on in our schools with our special education. I'll give you just a little background. My son is no longer in Pecosin City Schools. I have pulled him to do a homeschool co-op program, which he is thriving in and doing very well, but I have definitely treaded the water through Pecosin City Schools quite often, trying to get him the best education possible. And even to that, it was very difficult to get his needs met, and it looks like it is still going on. So I'm here tonight on behalf of all the special education families that might be thinking and really just, it's emotional to see your kids struggle so much, and I think it's really tough for these families, and it seems like that their needs are still not being met by taking a special education teacher and putting her in a TAG program. I think that's not the right thing to do. We are not staffed to do that type of thing. We need more staff to accommodate these children. I think the word woven into a lot of things tonight, I think a lot of things are getting woven into some decisions that are being made, so I think it's very important for these work sessions to be held public. I think all of our families have a right to know what is going on. We all know that this is, what we're raising our kids in today is like anything we have ever had to witness growing up ourselves, and we need some transparency. And with these work sessions being held private, I don't think it's right. I think we can go ahead and let us all figure out what's going on and be collaborative as parents to come together with going forward with the new plans and everything that we have, and most importantly, our teachers need to understand and have a voice in this because obviously that is a problem for Pecosin City Schools, is having teachers. I know quite a few friends that have taught and left. It's sad. Our, our community is based on our school systems, and we really just need to have those work sessions televised. Thank you.
There are no more speakers this evening.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda?
Consent agenda is approval of financial reports, authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached request, approval of personnel action, approval of revised minutes for August work session, approval of minutes for September regular meeting and October 3rd work session, approval to authorize the superintendent to sign a contract for custodial services with ServiceMaster Commercial Services for the 2024-2025 school year.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Firth, may you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is seven-zero.
Thank you. And Mr. DeBose, other matters for consideration?
I'd like to move that we approve the proclamation for the bus safety week.
I'll second.
Ms. Firth, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is seven-zero.
Thank you. And we'll go to communications and our other matters by the school board and our superintendent, Thatcher?
To start off, I will be reading the primary school report. This month, we are exploring at PPS, we have been exploring apples and pumpkins because these are such timely topics for the season. We are doing this exploration across several content areas with students reading and writing about apples and pumpkins, sorting and measuring apples and pumpkins, and comparing and contrasting apples and pumpkins. Our first-grade friends have been exploring careers and learning about our community helpers. Students learned how, how they do their jobs, what tools they use, and how they help us. Some students even wrote letters to our own Officer P. to thank him for keeping us safe in our school. This month is National Bullying Prevention Month, and this week, PPS and PES are focused on saying no to bullying and spreading kindness in our schools. So far this week, we have worn hats to put a lid on bullying and crazy socks to sock it to bullying. Tomorrow is National Unity Day, and all will be wearing orange in support of United Stand Against Bullying. Exciting events are happening this week with a visit from a mobile dairy farm and installation of a wheelchair accessible equipment on our playground. Also, today, we also had PHS students from the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy bring a free book to every first-grade student. PPS will soon be hosting a fall book fair, and we will be asking all to save a date for our family night. On November 2nd, families will be invited to come and visit our book fair with their students, but we will also be hosting a literacy open house. Huges will be doing read-alouds in classrooms and sharing, sharing families some ways to make these more interactive when you read to your child at home. There will also be library and our PTO on hand as well. Our PTO will be starting the Read-a-thon this week. We are encouraging students to read all the books. PTO parents will help with more information about this event on the family night. Thank you to all who have come to our, into our school to volunteer as reading buddies and mystery readers, as well as Helping Hands, which is kicking in gear to help our staff with prep of classroom interactive materials and learning tools. Now for the elementary school. Pecosin Elementary School is settling into the routines of our new school year. We have been enjoying the cooler temperatures by spending more time in the outdoor classroom. We are grateful for Susan Northcutt, master gardener, volunteer, and retired PCPS teacher, who has been teaching our students about the monarch butterflies visiting our learning garden. Ms. Northcutt has set up viewing areas inside the building, in classrooms, and outside for students to see the different stages of caterpillar, egg, caterpillar, chrysalis, and butterfly. Ms. Northcutt has tagged butterflies and helped classes release monarchs for their migration to Mexico. We are also thankful for the time Ms. Kelly Purdy and the WHRO shared with Pecosin Elementary School as they video-recorded students' learning in our garden and outdoor classroom. We are looking forward to seeing the results. Our students and staff are participating in an anti-bullying spirit week. We encourage everyone to be kind and respectful to each other. This week is highlighting positive behavior, but it's not just this week that we are, that we look for respectful students. We acknowledge our positive office referrals every day, and so far our school year, we have received over 200 positive office referrals. We are also using our beginning-of-the-year assessment information to form groups for additional reading and math instruction to meet students' needs. We are doing our very best to ensure our days are focused on instruction. Student attendance is critical to our, to their success and ensures students' opportunities to participate in the instruction plan for them. Now for the middle school report. Our school counselors have been busy setting up our students up for success with the classroom lessons. All sixth-grade students have participated in classroom counseling lessons entitled "Making the Most of Middle School." Students viewed a tips and tricks video made by seventh and eighth-grade PMS students, shared personal recommendations for managing lockers, homework, staying organized, peer relationships, and extracurricular involvement. Officer Gills, PMS School Resource Officer- peer relationships, and extracurricular involvement. Officer Gill, PMS School Resource Officer, has been busy conducting classroom dare lessons for all three grade levels. Pecosin Middle School cele, celebrate Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 27th, through drug prevention, education, and by participating in school spirit days that are designed to promote a drug-free lifestyle. This year's theme will be, "Be Kind to Your Mind: Pledge to be Drug-Free." Pecosin's middle school fall dance will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Friday, October 27th, and PMS would also like to congratulate our October Golden Bowl Students of the Month for the sixth-grade grade level, Robert Moore, seventh-grade Abby Rock, Rook, and eighth-grade Brooke Grisco. Now for the high school report. Pecosin High School is at an exciting month. PHS sophomores and some juniors completed their PSATs, and some of our juniors and seniors completed their ASVAB tests earlier this month. Golf completed and placed fourth in the state competition. A special congratulations to Braden Hermansky, who was our top performer at states. The rest of our spa, fall sports are wrapping up their regular season and finding great success. We look forward to many playoff games in our future. Our band competed in their first competition at Warhill and placed second overall and first best in visuals in the AAA division. We are proud of them and look forward to hearing them kick off the seafood festival this weekend at the main stage. One Lunch continues to be a great success for our PHS students. New additions to the One Lunch offerings continue as more and more options are available, including a new knitting club, Inktober, and one-act competition practices. We look forward to continuing to connect and engage students in different ways. PHS has had a wonderful homecoming week last week. We celebrated with some of our favorite additions like hall decorating, class shirts, the parade, Spirit Week, a packed dance, and a winning football game, Go Bulls. A special congratulations to Baylor Rink and Kate Garnett, our homecoming king and queen, and seniors for winning the spirit stick. We also added some new fun traditions, like seniors signing the senior spotlight wall and the senior tie-dying during One Lunch. It was a great time for all, and we appreciate all the effort put into an exciting week. As always, check out the Island Times on Parent Square for upcoming events at PHS. Thank you.
You. Mr. Ingram?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Allcamp. That's how you pronounce, okay, good. Congratulations for, uh, being the Senior of the Month. Want to also congratulate all the staff that were involved in the DODA grant. And speaking of, uh, Dr. Ratliff's, uh, talk about volunteers, PTO is always seeking out volunteers, so, uh, there's always an opportunity there for anyone. Um, want to thank all the speakers for coming out and speaking tonight on the various, uh, issues. And, um, I'd like to, if we can, I'd like to see that clock come back so that speakers can, you know, know how much time they have and, and, um, whether they need to speed up their, you know, their, their, uh, speech or what have you. That's it. Thank you.
Dr. Goodell?
Just to echo those thoughts, I just want to congratulate the admin team that put the DODA grant together, and, uh, thank the speakers for their time and sharing their thoughts and concerns.
I'd like to say congrats to Carson for student of Senior of the Month. I would also like to thank all the volunteers who help out with our community and schools. And I'd like to thank the community for your comments and emails. Even though you don't hear replies from me per protocol, the school board doesn't reply to comments, and only the chair and superintendent replies the emails sent to the board, I hear and appreciate your input and feedback. And like Ms. Brown said, parents need to be involved in their child's education. If you are concerned, send emails, come and talk in the meetings. You need to be the advocate for your kids and be part of their education, so, thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, I just want to congratulate Carson, very, on a job very well done. Thatcher and your fellow golf team members have excellent showing at the state, our band, athletic teams. Just on a positive note, you could not watch the videos of the pep rally and attend the homecoming parade and not feel some Pecosin pride. So, we do have a special community, and to echo Mr. Childress's comments, if we work together, um, you know, we're all here for the same goal. So, thank you to all who provided your public comment. As last time, it was very respectful, and we appreciate your time. This is what we need, and appreciate everyone taking the time out of your evening to come and express concerns. We do hear them. Finally, thank you to all the volunteers. I appreciate the volunteer check program. I think that is very important and necessary, because I've been in the schools lately, too, and it's great to see so many parents, and they're back in the schools, which is what we want. But I think, um, keeping a, in order and keeping track of all of our volunteers is important as well, so appreciate the time in that, um, program.
I'm sorry. Just want to echo the, uh, the thank yous and the appreciation that everybody else has noted. Also, want to thank all the people that came and, and talked. In a lot of cases, public speaking is a very hard thing to do, and it's a very tough thing to do, and we all get very passionate when it involves our family and things very close to us. So, thank you for coming, and thank you for coming and talking. It's, I know it's hard, and, uh, I know sometimes it can feel like you're not heard, but you are heard by everybody up here, so thank you.
Just kind of reiterating some of the things that were mentioned. First, I'd like to really thank all the public that came and spoke today. It helps us understand what the concerns of the community are, in addition to emails and things like that. I'd like to encourage more public to come to these meetings, to come to the work sessions. They are open to the public. I'd also like to thank Carson for being Senior of the Month. I hope you are successful. It sounds like you're on the way with perfect attendance and all A's to, uh, it sounds like veterinary medicine is in your future. So, congratulations. Huge, uh, you know, the DODA $500,000 grant, that's huge. That will help our reading programs in the future. And then also the volunteers. I'd like to really encourage the public, you know, when this program comes out, to definitely consider volunteering in our school. I enjoy it as a parent, and I think that our community has a lot of great things that they can do in our schools, so thank you.
Yeah. I would like to echo the sentiments of the board. Congratulations to Ms. Allcamp, and it's pretty impressive to have perfect attendance through your high school career. That's pretty awesome. And thank you to the public for coming and for your comments and emails. We do try to get back to you. We appreciate the time that you take to let us know, and, uh, you know, we all are here for the good of the children, and, and that is where we try to keep our focus, and you guys help us with that, so we, we're thankful for that. Mr. Tillot?
Yeah, I just have a, also echo all the, um, comments from the board, and congratulations, Carson. Great. I want to reiterate the volunteer request. This package that, um, our team has put together, and Kelly Purdy, thanks for your hard work on that. It is comprehensive, and it's so we can get more people in our schools safely. One of the speakers tonight alluded to, um, the governor's all-in plan. We're feverishly working on a very short timeframe to meet the requirements of that plan. It is overwhelming. We're going to need somewhere close to almost a hundred tutors to actually make this work. We don't have a hundred people, um, available to tutor in our employ, so we're going to need you. If you can afford any time for our children to help tutor, we need you desperately. So, um, I, 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 I'm mind-boggled to think about, um, our work, and then to think about larger school divisions, that, that number is fifty times that in need of tutors. As well, our kids have done really well. So, the, the kids that will need that kind of intense tutoring for Pecosin is a smaller number proportionally than other school divisions around us. So, to keep in mind, this is a, this is a comprehensive, uh, program that's going to launch in a hundred and thirty-three school divisions, all looking for, for help, um, to do this. At the same time, we're in a national educator shortage. A lot of the challenges you've heard about tonight come from the fact that we are missing staff. We've done everything we know to do to keep recruiting, and we'll continue that effort, but we need help. We need teachers, we need substitutes, we need bus drivers, and we need you to tutor, um, to help. So, appreciate that. And then the other, uh, another plug for, um, as Tracy mentioned tonight, the, uh, impact aid document that's going out through Parent Square, please, if you're in any way military-connected, that doesn't mean you have to be in, in the military, you might do work on a military site as a contractor, or in some way connected with the military. There's lots of levels in that. Please fill out that impact aid document. That $500,000 would not be possible. We wouldn't qualify if it was not for our level of milita, military connectivity. So, please, um, fill that out. We know that there are some folks who don't fill it out each year, and that, uh, is, is a challenge for us to, to access this level of funding from the federal government. So, thank you all. I appreciate, um, all of your hard work and efforts.
Thank you. Miss Firth, any other material for board review?
No, ma'am.
Alright. Then we will adjourn our, uh, meeting for October 17th. Thank you all.